Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Monday, January 13th, 2014 meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. Before we have the presentation of colors, I'd like to recognize Alicia Mason, our SRO from Hickory Ridge Middle School, who is here providing security. Thank you for being here, Alicia. We certainly do appreciate it. Our presentation of colors will be a combined unit of JROTC cadets. We will have Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Gary Cooper from Mount Pleasant High School, Cadet First Lieutenant Matthew Luke from Northwest Cabarrus High School, Cadet First Lieutenant Quinn Hemler, JM Robinson High School, and Cadet Major Matt Crowder from JM Robinson. Please rise for the presentation of colors.
And our final honoree from Boger Elementary School this evening is Ms. Karen Martin. Would Mrs. Martin and her family please come forward? Why don't you come forward? There you go. Karen Martin is the school treasurer at Charlie Boger Elementary School. She and her husband Kyle have two sons, Zach, a fifth grader at Boger, and Chase, a 10th grader at Hickory Ridge High School. Mrs. Martin is a person of high integrity and is very detail-oriented, which are traits that are very important in this position. She is extremely efficient in keeping the school's financial and timesheet records in order. She consistently gets positive feedback and exemplary audit reports for her bookkeeping skills, keeping Boger and CCS financially sound. She always goes above and beyond to ensure that the school has highly qualified substitutes, even on days when a sub is hard... Even on days when a sub is hard to find, she's able to work her magic to help provide coverage for the classroom so instruction can continue. She is a backup to the school nurse and is a central point of contact or Boger's go-to person for questions, sending out morning announcements, sharing information with appropriate persons as needed. She pitches in to assist wherever there is a need. She assists in the office and helps set a positive and welcoming tone when answering the phone, greeting parents, or registering new students. When she interacts with students and staff, she is kind and very accommodating. She's very efficient and willing to ask questions. Mrs. Martin provides such a high degree of service that the school runs smoothly and seamlessly. Her dedication to Boger shows itself in all aspects of her daily work. The school is a better place due to the high standards she sets for herself. Congratulations, Mrs. Martin, and thank you for making an impact through education at Boger Elementary School. Next, we will honor students and staff at Cox Mill High School. I'd like to invite any members of the Cox Mill High School administrative team to come forward to stand with their students and staff. Our first honoree from Cox Mill High School this evening is David Hamilton. Would David and his family please come forward? I promise you can stand a little bit closer. David is a senior at Cox Mill High School. To impact education and the lives of others, David reaches out to other classmates to make sure they also understand the work that is required. And although he feels he is not swell at test, helping others study helps him to grasp information better. After high school, David plans to attend the very prestigious Music and Performing Arts College, Berkeley College of Music in Boston, Massachusetts. He is an experienced drummer and first began drumming at the tender age of one. I'm sure his parents were excited about that. He's played in large venues and had the opportunity to do studio work and share the stage with many famous musicians. Living his life as a recording engineer and producer is his dream. He could not ask for anything more than to be recognized as more than a musician, but as an artist and a student who warms the hearts of others he encounters. Congratulations, David. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill High School. Our next honoree from Cox Mill High School is Mary Marston. Would Mary and her family please come forward? Mary is also a senior at Cox Mill High School. Throughout her high school career, she has studied the languages of Spanish, Mandarin, and Arabic, and most courses offered by the History Department at Cox Mill High School. After school, Mary has led Model United Nations and the New Global Citizens Club. She's also participated in varsity volleyball, Spanish club, Chinese club, and mock trial, and a variety of community service activities. Mary says her most challenging, her most life-changing volunteer effort has been tutoring refugees and other underprivileged children at Mother Teresa's Missionaries of Charity. Mary is very passionate about her international affairs, using education as a tool to improve lives and utilizing her knowledge to make her peers more aware of global issues. In the future, she hopes to major in international politics and minor in a foreign language, pursue a law degree, and aspires to have a career that will allow her to change lives. Congratulations, Mary. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Cox Mill High School. Our next honoree from Cox Mill High School is Mr. Zachary Hubbard. Would Mr. Hubbard and his family please come forward? Zachary Hubbard is the Information Technology Academy co-director and computer programming teacher, as well as the Future Business Leaders of America advisor, co-creator of the teacher, co-creator of the Cabarrus County Schools App Challenge at Cox Mill High School. Zach is originally from Brevard, North Carolina, and graduated from Appalachian State University in 2009 with a degree in Business and Information Technology Education, and in 2011 with a master's degree in Business Administration and Higher Education. Immediately after graduation, he began teaching at Cox Mill High School, where he was able to add several new courses to the Business and Information Technology Department, such as Computer Programming 1, Computer Programming 2, and AP Computer Science. His favorite thing about his job is seeing students develop a passion for computer science. As a career and technical education teacher, he is able to provide students with activities that enrich their learning and are easily relatable to the real world, both inside and outside the classroom. Sponsoring FBLA at Cox Mill has been a great experience for Zach because it allows him to bridge an after-school club with activities that are occurring in his classroom. Zach's colleagues indicate that he is always ready to lend a helping hand, and he is a pleasure to work with in cross-curricular activities. Congratulations, Mr. Hubbard, and thank you for making an impact through education at Cox Mill High School. And our final honoree from Cox Mill High School this evening is Ms. Janet Davis. Would Ms. Davis and her family please come forward? Janet Davis is the media assistant at Cox Mill High School, and she has been in the education field for more than 20 years since her oldest child started kindergarten. She volunteered in her children's classrooms when they were in elementary school, and as they got older, she started to substitute teach. Overall, she has officially worked in the school system for 13 years. Her impact through education is best expressed by her ability to talk to students who she observes are by themselves, often shy, or have a tough disposition. She believes that speaking to them and calling them by their names whenever she sees them seems to give them a whole new attitude, as if to say, "Okay, someone sees me and cares that I exist." It is through that interaction that she has seen a whole new person emerge, and a student is helped. For her, that is a great feeling. Congratulations, Mrs. Davis, and thank you for making an impact through education at Cox Mill High School.
Okay, thank you. Do you remember when I said this was the best part of our job? So, this is what we really like, when we get to see the achievements and get to recognize staff and students and hear of all the good things that are going on at our schools. And before we move on, I would like to thank Concord Printing Company, because they're the ones who sponsor our Impact Through Education Award, and that is greatly appreciated that they are willing to support us in that endeavor. Our next item, board members, will be 4.2, our 2013 Holiday E-Card Design Contest winners. And we'd like to recognize Ms. Ronnie Boone and Ms. Amy Stafford at the podium.
I'd like to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to invite Ms. Amy Stafford to join me up at the front here, and also Dr. Shepherd, if you would come to present the awards to our Holiday E-Card winners.
And Ronnie, can we have the art teacher, if they're here? Can they come to the front as well?
Absolutely.
Fantastic.
Once again this year, Walmart at Concord Commons has agreed to sponsor the prizes for our Holiday E-Card winners, and they are giving each winner a $25 Walmart gift card. So, we appreciate their generosity and thank them for doing that for us once again this year. Tonight, I'm excited to introduce to you the winners of our third annual Holiday E-Card Design Contest. And we invited students to submit holiday-themed designs that would be used in Dr. Shepherd's electronic holiday greeting card that he sends out to his colleagues, community members, business leaders, elected officials, as well as Cabarrus County Schools employees. This year's entries did not disappoint, and we know that we have some very, very talented artists here in Cabarrus County Schools. So, Dr. Shepherd is tasked with the difficult decision to choose only three of those designs. And every year, he does a fantastic job of selecting three of the best of some really good work. So, tonight, I want to introduce you to our winners from each of the school categories. Our elementary school winner is Dasha Sekulich. And would Dasha and her art teacher, who is Ms. Jamie Kissler, come forward if they are here this evening? Dasha is a second grader at Pitt School Road Elementary School, and her winning design features a friendly snowman decked out in mittens and a top hat, holding a cup of hot cocoa or hot chocolate. And we are very excited to present Dasha with her certificate and also with her prize from Walmart. Congratulations, Dasha. The winner from our middle school category is Lauren Neely. Lauren, would you and your art teacher, Ms. Lori Earnhardt, please come forward? And actually, I did hear from Ms. Earnhardt that she was not going to be able to be here this evening. Lauren is a seventh grader at Harold Winkler Element, Harold Winkler Middle School, I'm sorry, and her winning design features a Nutcracker Soldier standing behind several hanging ornaments. Congratulations, Lauren. And the winner from our high school category is Mary Martinez. Would Mary and her art teacher, Ms. Deanna Lad, please come forward? I see you don't think she's here? Okay, so you can accept her prize for her. Mary is an 11th grade student at Northwest Cabarrus High School, and her winning design features a father and daughter enjoying an evening stroll in a wooded winter wonderland, complete with snow-capped evergreen trees and a snow-covered lake and bridge. So, we congratulate Mary as well.
Okay, next, we'll move on to 4.4, and welcome Ms. Kathy Auger to the podium for our Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Assistant of the Year Award. Ah, I'm sorry, I did, 4.3. Hillbush Ford Teachers of the Month Award. Dr. Shepherd, would you join her? Thank you. I was so eager to get to our TAs and their award. Skipped right over that part, sorry about that.
We have a lot of wonderful people here this evening. Yes, we do. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Tonight, we kick off the new year with our first Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for 2014. Mr. Vaughn is unable to be with us tonight, and we look forward to seeing him again next month. It's through the generosity of Hillbush Ford that we're able to honor outstanding teachers each month. To date, we've recognized 27 Cabarrus County teachers across our district. We're sincerely grateful for this wonderful partnership. The Cabarrus County Schools Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month is Merrill Hurley. Ms. Hurley, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team please come forward? Merrill Hurley is a chemistry teacher at JM Robinson High School. She was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote, "Both of my sons have been fortunate to have Merrill Hurley as their chemistry teacher. She makes a very difficult subject entertaining, engaging, and fun. Her labs are exciting and have wow factors that pique curiosity and encourage the kids to learn more." She continued, "She's a devoted teacher who will stay after or come in early to help tutor to make sure each student grasps difficult concepts. She makes the students believe in themselves and encourages them to strive to do better each day." Mrs. Hurley is a born educator, and we are richly blessed to have her here at JM Robinson High School. Ms. Hurley, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, please accept our thanks for all you do to engage, entertain, encourage, and teach your students every day.
Okay, fantastic. And now, we will move on to our Teacher Assistant of the Year Award.
Wonderful. We are pleased to share a new tradition this evening, our first Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Assistant of the Year Award. In addition, we are excited to introduce our individual school winners. The Cabarrus County Schools Teacher Assistant of the Year Program recognizes the contributions of teacher assistants to their schools, the community, and their profession. In addition, the District Teacher Assistant of the Year will be submitted as a finalist in the North Carolina Association Teacher Assistant of the Year Program. Our honorees were evaluated on their professional practice, contribution to the school improvement plan, goals and strategies, their personal impact on student learning, collaboration, flexibility, and attitude. Winners from each school who met the criteria for the state competition were then interviewed by a team this year composed of Mary Newsom, Markel Kies, Heidi Little, and Judy York. And at this time, I'd like to invite all of our TAs to please come up front for recognition. And as they're coming up, I'd like to share a few of our TAs are unable to be here this evening. However, we want to announce all of their names to be sure that all of the TAs and their schools do get recognition. Wonderful. Okay, well, I would like to formally announce each of you and recognize you, and if you would just step forward slightly as I call out your name. A.T. Allen Elementary School, Jana Ritchie. Beverly Hills Elementary School, Lori Holland. Carl A. Fur Elementary School, Kelly Pompey. Charles E. Boger Elementary School, Jessica Jackson. Coltrane Webb Elementary School, Guinevere Jackson. Concord High School, Jamie Russ. Concord Middle School, Kelly Templeton. Cox Mill Elementary School, Sharon Flo. Harris Road Middle School, Jeffrey Wallace. Harrisburg Elementary School, Karen Garrick. Hickory Ridge High School, Gray Hoover. Mount Pleasant Elementary School, Pam Linker. Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, Dee Carter. Pitt School Road Elementary School, Tanya DeVore. Rocky River Elementary School, Robin Hartzell. WR Odell Elementary School, Cynthia Shine. WM Irvin Elementary School, Chris Rosemeyer. Weddington Hills Elementary School, Kristy Teal. Wyancoff Elementary School, Michelle Pletcher. And Wolf Meadow Elementary School, Mitchell Johnson. Michelle Johnson, thank you. And let's give our individual school winners a round of applause. And now, I'd like to ask our district winner, and congratulations to her, our CCS Teacher Assistant of the Year for 2013-14 is Karen Garrick from Harrisburg Elementary, if she will step forward, please. I'd like to share a little bit of information about Karen with you. Karen has been a teacher assistant in Cabarrus County Schools for nine years and has worked in all grade levels. For the past six years, she's concentrated her efforts to support students and teachers in kindergarten. Ms. Garrick is remarkable in the care she shows each student. She anticipates classroom needs to prepare instructional resources. She provides individual and small group instruction to students with reading and math challenges. She's always willing to help in any way and carries a positive attitude to school each day. Ms. Garrick has been instrumental at the district level in sharing the contributions of teacher assistants. Karen is married to Dr. Bruce Garrick, a professor at UNCC. They've lived in Concord, North Carolina for 12 years and have three children, all of whom graduated from JM Robinson High School. So, please, please join me in another round of applause for Karen Garrick and all of our Teacher Assistants of the Year. If y'all would like to turn around, you can shake hands with the board, kind of, here you go. Thank you.